Okay, thank you all for coming tonight to East Dundee's Board of Trustees. Our regular meeting dated Monday, February 5th, 2024. I've got six o'clock. Catherine, will you take the roll?
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Coonty.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tribber will not be here. Trustee Soder.
Here.
And President Lyneum.
Here. And if you'll all rise with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like we're gonna have a short one tonight. Is there anybody who takes us to our public comment section? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board, either on an agenda or a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to our consent agenda if we could have a motion.
I will move to approve the release of executive session minutes and the destruction of verbatim audio records, records of meeting minutes dated January 3rd, 2017, March 6th, 2017, March 20th, 2017. How about I say all of the dates listed in the, uh, item A. I will move to accept the warrants list in the amount of $35,501.29 and $130,837.20. I'll move to approve a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code to expend $62,000, $62,000 in motor fuel tax funds in the fiscal year of 2024. I will move to approve a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code to retroactively expend $30,000 in motor fuel tax funds in the stub year 2023. And I will move to approve an ordinance granting a liquor E-license to the Anvil Club, Inc., and amending Section 116.05B of the Village Code to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses for tequila vals. And I will move to approve ordinance, amending Section 32.10 of the Village of East Dundee Village Code relating to village boards, committees, councils, and commissions.
I'll second.
Are there any questions on this? Okay, I just have one concerning item F. This is not a problem, I don't see any issue with it. But at the same time, I just think for future boards, we might want to consider putting then into this an amendment that would allow for an appointment process, similar to what we do for elected officials, for committees, boards, councils, and commissions. Simply because as they are all subject to the Open Meetings Act, the appointment process should be established and, like I say, mimic what the state statute allows for the appointment of elected officials. So, we can look to that in the near future to do. But just to keep you all up on that. That is, that is all I have. Does anybody else have any questions? Quiet, comments? Okay, Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonty.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to our regular agenda items. And we will start with item A. Makes sense, can I have a motion?
I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into a contract for the purchase of electricity from the lowest-cost electricity provider for the purposes of street lighting through the Northern Illinois Municipal Electrical Collaborative Bid Process.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? Eric, can you run us through this one? We used to have, like you and I discussed before, a relationship with New Constellation Energy that provided for a, almost a real-time change in pricing for the village. And as this, as I read through it, I didn't see a whole lot of difference. I'm assuming that's essentially what we got here?
So, it's similar, and we actually had a representative that was supposed to be here. I'm not sure if he's delayed or not. But basically, what we have before you tonight is this company, NiMac, will bid on our behalf with a collection of other municipalities. Because with a group bid, you can get more competitive pricing. And then they will provide the pricing to us. And this would just be for city, for village-owned facilities. This wouldn't be for residents. I think we also used to have municipal aggregation in, in East Dundee.
We did.
But then the pricing became less competitive to what ComEd was offering. So, I think ComEd is still the current supplier for residents. But this pricing, if we get it and it is more favorable than what we currently have, we will initiate a contract. If it's not more favorable, we'll just forego and see what happens next year.
Great. And this, of course, is the pricing just on the power of the supply, not the distribution?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, any questions, comments? Nope. Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonty.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item B. This is just a discussion of the current animal control ordinance, 92-03, contained in the Village Code. Chief, maybe you can weigh in on this? I don't know really what the latitude that any municipality has with regard to control that would supersede King County ordinance. But sure, being able to limit breeds, I don't really know what we can do here. So, could you help us?
You guys did request, the board requested that I do some research. And I researched the ordinances of several local municipalities. I also consulted with the village attorney and found that our, our current ordinance is pretty robust. It allows for a lot of latitude for us to enforce some of the animal control issues, particularly as it pertains to dogs. I know back in 2018, 19, there were several instances, back-to-back, where there were some pretty bad dog attacks to not just people, to other dogs. And we have then adopted in 2019, King County's ordinance. And again, I really feel like that ordinance is pretty robust. We don't really need to change it. What I would advise is that we kind of attack it through an educational campaign, whether it be through social media, having my officers counsel people when they see people go out, especially at the different parts, that their dogs are on a leash. My guys need to be talking to those folks. And then it's, it's an educational campaign, but if it's a repeat occurrence, then we're gonna start citing them. We'll start enforcing.
So, um, there was an attack not long ago, and a dog was put down, but it was put down voluntarily by the owner. Do we have, we, as I looked through, I didn't see anywhere where it allowed for the municipality to force an animal to be put down in the amendment at hand. Do we have that power?
No, the ordinance, as I read it, says that we can have the dog impounded, right? At work for up to 10 days. They have to go through the rabies testing. And then I have the ability to label the dog as, as a dangerous animal. And then that restricts them, they have to be in enclosure. They have to, the, the owner has to allow the police department to inspect the enclosure to make sure that the dog is in that enclosure. And it can't be loose at all times. There's a few exceptions to that, like inclement weather or some of that where they do some of that effect.
And, and one other thing, the county makes a distinction between vicious and dangerous. Do we?
Our ordinance changed that.
Okay.
It's just dangerous for us.
So, it's, if your dog attacks somebody, it's considered dangerous, it doesn't really matter?
Exactly. I have the ability as chief to deem that, that animal dangerous. And then they have a lot of hoops they have to jump through to make sure it never happens again.
Okay. Yeah, it's unfortunate, but by the time this erupts, the damage has been done because somebody's been bit.
It, it is reactive.
You know, so it's kind of the way it is.
It sounds like that's where the education piece is really gonna come in.
Exactly.
We used to, I don't know if this was discussed last time, at least 17-something years ago, we used to require registration for dogs in town. You had to register your dog, you had to register them with the police department and the village. They had tags, all of that. It was a way of, you know, knowing that it's a local dog. If it got out of your yard and you see the East Dundee tag, you could take it down. The police department could figure out whose dog it was pretty easily. And then it was also a way to force owners to read the ordinance, because you had to sign off.
Sure.
And say, "I am aware of the legal around," whatever was in the books at the time. I mean, who knows what it was, it was probably three sentences. But I wonder if we want to consider something like that, or if that's not really part of it? Just as part of this education campaign, making sure everybody's aware in town, making sure dog owners are being responsible dog owners? Or do we just want to wait for somebody to get, like, a problem to happen?
Catherine, do you recall?
Yes.
Well, because we had, we used to have, like Sarah mentioned, the reason for licensing, and then we did away with it. It's about 15 years ago.
It was also when this village was so strapped, we were looking at getting rid of the mail, mail newsletter that we sent out. We used to send out quarterly, you know, which was our only communication pre, you know, social media with our residents. And so, the cost of it was, was the cost to manage and do the tags and, and was, was greater than, than the benefit that was seen. However, I think now that there's, you know, we've got really great technology with, with tracking and being able to do it online and that kind of thing.
Animals can be microchipped now.
I was just gonna ask if we can require the-
Animals can be microchipped as well.
Yeah, yeah. And, and just one, one other thing. So, so I think, I thought we still had a voluntary, you know, you can register your dog if your dog gets out, and then the police will know who. But if we want to, to, you know, take it to the next level with either tags or chips instead, but you can't tell by looking at a dog.
Well, and can you force a dog owner to do their microchipping?
Just let me go back to one thing.
I'm sorry.
The village, you do have the power to euthanize under a dangerous dog investigation.
Euthanize?
But you got to follow the procedural due process steps set forth in the ordinance. So, that's part of the relief. If the owner appeals, and, you know, the court would decide whether the dog should be euthanized or not. But that, yeah, that's part of the-
Oh, okay. Yeah.
We do have a chip reader as well, that we use. And we'll get dogs that are loose, they're friendly, we'll bring them in here to the PD, and we can scan them with the chip reader and tell us who the owner is.
If, if we know they're chipped, right? I mean, I don't want to-
Stand for it, but-
Get into people's lives, governments' inner lives, too much as it is. But we could talk about making that a requirement. If we were to bring back the idea of a licensing program, if this does, you know, grow into a bigger problem, can we require that they chip? Is that something we can do?
You could.
Yeah.
You can require shipping?
Can require shipping.
Okay.
Require shipping if there is a, if there is a dog that is out and, and has a neglectful owner or-
Yeah, and it happens.
And then it's not chipped, then we require that it get chipped. But not necessarily as a part of the, the registration.
Yeah.
Chief, when you impound a dog, where does it go?
So, we, we actually don't use King County anymore for that service. We have a whole shelter that we have here.
So, they can, for stray dogs, they can, I mean, you could add into your ordinance if you wanted to, that they even be spayed, neutered, and microchipped before they're returned back to the owner.
Oh, okay.
If they're not.
Yeah, that's a lot more to it than I thought. Well, um, well, I guess what we would definitely want to do is, we've got ordinances on books that, you know, explain in detail some of the control we do have. You know, I would, I would suggest that maybe we look to tweak it. Because it seems like there's a lot of areas that, you know, we can, you know, tighten it up.
My understanding is it seems like it's more the matter of the education and the enforcement of it.
Yeah.
It's already there.
Yeah.
It's just enforcement. It doesn't seem like there's much to change, rather it just follows through.
I think we should at least start with the education and enforcement.
Start with the education, yes.
You know, and then see if we need to change things.
If I could make one thought, or suggestion on the education part, is to put, you know, a bag notice on everybody's door. Because people aren't online, people aren't always watching us. But everybody goes through their door. So, I think we should put a letter in everybody's door saying, starting now, zero tolerance on dogs, you know, not on leashes. Because everybody knows you're supposed to have your dog on a leash. It's not, you don't need to educate people to do that.
But did you know that it has to be an eight-foot leash? So essentially retractable leashes are illegal in town?
Well, I mean honestly-
Because I didn't know that.
Honestly, I don't have a problem with jack leashes.
Right, I mean, for safety purpose, but, you know.
Every time I walk down my street, there's a dog that's out in the yard without a leash. And like, that drives me nuts.
Sorry, so-
I don't walk a dog, but other people do. And you, you know, you can't control that.
I'm sure you have some non-for-profits rescues in town or around town that might be willing to, like, even, sometimes they'll take, they'll get donations of leashes and calories and hand them out to people as part of a campaign if they want to seek to partner the local rescue.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Catherine, should we bring back Tail Wagons Tuesday? I don't want to add to your workload, but-
Well, and another, another thing we want to be careful of, because I know, I know that there are the off-leash dogs, but we also have invisible fences. And a lot of people's backyards are the size of postage stamps, so there are invisible fences on the front yard. That's still a little iffy for the people who are walking their dogs on a leash.
Right.
If your invisible fence is in your front yard.
I mean, if you have an invisible fence, I would say, and a police officer's driving by and doesn't see his dog on a leash, then that's a question, right? Go and ask them.
They're supposed to have a sign.
There should be a sign.
Yeah, it's under 5-9. Persons who utilize invisible fencing must prominently display on their property immediately adjacent to the public right of a sign which indicates that any animal thereon is contained by invisible fencing.
Yeah. It does also go back to the eight-foot leash requirement. If you have an eight-foot leash and your dog is under your control, then it shouldn't be an issue. But if you have a retractable 15, 18-foot leash, who knows?
Yeah. I like, I like the idea of doing the education in either a letter and/or as a notice, utility bills, because everybody gets those, and make it simpler than the whole ordinance, which is frequently asked questions. You know, what are, what are my responsibilities as, as a, as a responsible pet owner?
And, oh, by the way, if you want to read the ordinance, here's how you can access it, the full ordinance.
And also the weekly newsletter.
Yeah, all of the things.
All the things.
How about we start with drafting something that will provide to all residents and include in the newsletter as well? We'll let you see it before we send it out.
Where we stand.
And then check back in in six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, if that works.
What do, what do we do when there is a dog? It seems like the main problem is when an aggressive dog gets out and is running around. So like educating people on leash laws and how to microchip seems like a side point. But like, what is the penalty if your dog's running around and being aggressive, but it hasn't bitten anyone? Is there like a three strikes and then this happens? Like what happens when you do find, like the recent thing with Paula, the dog that chased her around? Is there like a warning and then something else that if that dog keeps getting out, then there's more enforcement over time?
Then you, I mean, you eventually get cited, that's our enforcement portion of it. However, I did meet with, she was able to identify the house. I met with her at her house, she was able to identify the house that the dog had come from. I met with that owner, the dog was in there, I could see why she was upset. He was very aggressive towards me, but he thankfully was in the house, I was outside. But the gentleman I met with, I explained to him, hey, this happened on such-and-such date, this can't happen again. If there isn't again, you will get cited. You know, we have an ordinance in place, I said, your dog has to be on a leash. And he acted as though he didn't know about it, he was kind of-
Was this house on lease?
I'm not sure.
Because we had a situation about a, I don't know, a couple of years ago where same sort of thing happened, and it was a pit bull that just went right through the fence. It was, yeah. And I mean, this thing just went right through the pickets on the wooden fence in the backyard and charged the lady. And same thing happened, but it was a horrible outcome for her. And to your point, what do you do at that point?
Is this a 911 call?
It certainly could be. She, so the dog in this instance had her kind of pinned against a neighbor's residence. The neighbor saw this happening and let her in, because she had her little dog in her hand. The pit bull wanted the little dog.
Got it.
Yeah.
Alrighty, well, so then we can work to see about putting something together. And then like Scott said, we can put together a newsletter and make sure it gets to all the residents to let them know what the position of the village is and the expectations of all the donors. Everybody in my neighborhood owns a dog, it seems, so it's gonna be-
What is the fine for no leash?
I don't know.
Probably in your catch-all section, in your administrative, uh, here we go. So, it's $75 to $500.
What is, what is the range? Like just the discretion of the-
It's a discretion of the hearing officer or judge, yeah.
And then how does it escalate from there? If your dog's running around, you get maybe a warning and then you get a fine? And then it's a date labeled a dangerous dog at some point, or how does that work?
So, if the dog's running at large, the police have the right to impound that dog immediately. Doesn't matter if it's aggressive or not. If you have, they have a scanner, so they, if it's a friendly dog, they can scan it, send it home, do a warning, right?
90% of the time, that's exactly what happens.
Right, yeah. If it's not friendly, you know, they're, they're not gonna want to try to figure out, you know, scanning this dog, and so they're gonna go and pound it. Hopefully after the fact, figure out, and then, you know, decide whether to issue a citation or-
So, it's impounded, they have to pay the fine to get their dog back?
They usually have to pay like a storage fee. And I don't know what your agreement is with the local animal control. But there's probably some provision, a fee they have to pay for the storage of the dog.
Because I feel like this maybe should be our awareness campaign as to this problem. When it happens, here's the steps in dissuading people from ever wanting this to happen, so they're much more careful and not just like, not giving them all the dog rules. There are too many, but just like focusing on these issues or like aggression issues.
Key points.
Or if there's other ones that we think are important, but it seems like these are the core ones. So, they pay a fine to get their dog back and the impound fee, and then they can go back to normal?
They might just pay a storage fee. I don't know what the agreement is with the animal control, but they won't be fined unless there's a citation issued.
And then it sounded like you can label it a dangerous dog if it seemed to cause someone to feel like it could threaten you or, or cause harm to you or your dog.
Yeah.
Does that happen immediately?
That's the chief, right?
There's a, there's an investigation that has to take place. So, we hate referring to dogs as property because we think of them as family, but dogs by the law are property. So, if you're taking someone's property, you have to file the due process. So theoretically, you can be taking the property through a dangerous dog investigation by either impounding it, euthanizing it, or restricting the property rights. So, the chief has to do an investigation, determine what happened. Because if a dog attacks somebody, you know, in its own home because someone was breaking in, well, that dog shouldn't be labeled dangerous. But if a dog is, you know, running at large and biting people, then, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, I'm okay with this awareness campaign kind of outlining when dogs get out and they're aggressive, these things can happen, to kind of make people aware of how serious it is and how, I wouldn't want somebody to just lose their dog because it got out and it wasn't, it wasn't something they knew would happen. So, it's kind of better to let them know how serious it is up front and make sure that it prevents some of these things.
Dog gets out, that happens. It's an animal, and it's gonna happen on occasion. But if it happens, and happens again and again, well, then we can't let it go.
Some of us have Houdinis that find every single hole in the fence that exists. And it takes literally every single time to be like, oh, there's a new one. Oh, they got a new one, that's fun.
Yeah, and I've caught a lot of dogs in our neighborhood and taken them back home. Like, I don't think it's a terrible thing that a dog gets out. But when it is like a pit bull that's trying to attack someone else's dog.
Right, that's far different.
Yeah, could be a pit bull who's hungry, you know. You're not gonna want to mess with it, so. Bill, did you have a question?
Well, my one concern would be during the depot market. We have people who bring their dog, we have vendors who bring a dog, and we have customers who bring a dog. And generally, they're always on a leash, sometimes not. But I remember years ago, they used to have in the park, in Depot Park, they used to have signs on, one or two, "Dog must be on a leash," or something, something with that effect. And it was in the park. And it lasted about maybe three years, and the signs disappeared. But I think that helped the ordinance. I remember an incident, people were, we had a problem with the-
No, but when, when you are talking, it's a good point. When we're talking about the depot specifically, any village-owned property, somebody gets bit, now it becomes a liability for the village, and that, that's a big problem.
Well, technically, I think in the ordinance, it even says that dogs aren't allowed on, like, you can have them, they must be leashed. I mean, dogs must be leashed in this town.
In the public way.
Period. Like, on public way, there's a period after that statement. There is no off-leash walking, and there is no, nothing like that. On, on the, on the depot, like, well, it can't be inside buildings. Is there anything about, okay. But yeah, I mean, the leash laws are town-wide. It is not depot-specific. We, having signs back up and putting signs out might be part of the education campaign, especially if we still have issues. But, you know.
The sign, the sign years and years ago, probably about 20 years ago, was no dogs allowed, thanks to June putting them up without an ordinance. That was against our ordinance. And that was taken down the next day by Pena, I think did it himself. So, um, so I, I think, I think you're right. I don't remember, uh, dogs must be on leash, but that's the kind of thing. And we're not, and you shouldn't be having to police that, you know, if you're running the market either. But there's usually plenty, I usually see plenty of police around, even on market days, that you can just give them a call or whatever, if you think it's a problem.
Well, and there's something about our parks too, where dogs aren't allowed inside parks. Or something, like, there was something I-
Non-dog park related?
Right, not, like, I, I don't remember exactly what it is, but it was like, leashed or not leashed.
And that's a good point too. If a dog is in, in, in one of our parks and it's running around and it attacks somebody, I'm curious what the liability would be. Would that be on the village or would it be on the park district?
School, premises, or public?
Because I mean, a lawsuit's likely to erupt, and I'm not trying to, you know, dodge anything, but- What's that? Well, that too, but you know how people are, they'll name everybody associated with the issue at hand. And then next thing you know, even if you're not finding liable, we at least gotta go to court and answer the bell, and that costs money to do, and that's my point, so. Okay, so I, I think we've got a good direction on how to go about tweaking our ordinance and then communicating it out. I like the idea of a newsletter sent out to the, to everybody or-
Tweaking the ordinance, aren't we?
No.
Yeah, I think we were gonna let it sit.
Yep.
Keep the ordinance as it is, because chief and, and our council say it's very robust. Do the education campaign and then revisit it in six months.
Yep.
And, and enforce.
And enforce.
Yeah, yes, education and enforcement.
One other question about, you said that we don't have dangerous and vicious designations in our town? Or we do, I thought those were in the ordinance here.
The, so, it's kind of one and the same. Dangerous is the designation you would give a dog after an attack of some kind. It doesn't even have to necessarily be an attack on a human, it could be dog to dog, too. You know, vicious is usually associated with a breed or a guard dog. But the dangerous designation is-
It's already a-
It's already in there, it's good enough.
And then once you get that designation, it sounds like you're supposed to have rules on the fences, it gets inspected, they also have to be on a leash within a fence. Doors have to be locked, you have to have a muzzle when they leave. Like, do we enforce? I feel like we should enforce that more strictly too, once we do have those issues. Or, and also let people know that that's something you'll get if your dog gets out and gets labeled dangerous or vicious.
Yeah, a dog that's under that designation where the ruling is to allow it to continue to live, not euthanize, should always have a muzzle on in public.
Yeah.
Yeah, because at St. Patty's Day Parade, we, a lot of people have dogs as they're walking up and down. And I've seen a number actually of, in the past of pit bulls. And I'm thinking to myself, good God, you know, there's hundreds of kids around here, and this guy's got an 80-pound pit bull. Now, it's probably a gentle animal, who knows? But, you know, they're also unpredictable, so.
There's a lot of very sweet pit bulls that are trained properly by responsible owners.
I'm sure, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't want my dog around a parade, I know.
And he's a lump of brainless cells, so.
So, we got some, we got some direction then on how to proceed. Appreciate it, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll take us to item C, then, if we could have a motion.
I'll move to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into a professional services agreement with Baxter Woodman Consulting Engineers
a professional services agreement with Baxter Woodman Consulting Engineers to develop a project plan in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand four hundred dollars.
Second?
Questions? I have several.
Would you like to start with your questions, or do you want me to give you a little introduction into the...
Well, why don't you, why don't you start, give us a rundown on what your, where your position is on this?
Great, sure, sure. So in the coming years, we have a number of relatively expensive projects that we are looking to pursue within our water system, so there's a... The I E P A has a bucket of loan funds for wastewater, and a separate bucket for water. So this, we're looking for a public water supply loan program, low-interest loan. The, in my memo, I touched on some of the projects, and on the, on the screen here is a little bit more of an overview, detailed overview of some of the projects that we're looking to pursue over the next five-year period. The, trying to think, in my memo, it talks a little bit about the, the schedule, so the, before I get into the projects, with approval of this project plan, Baxter Woodman would assist staff in developing it and submitting to the I E P A, ideally before sometime late summer, early fall. The I E P A will then review it, and then get back to us sometime, on or before the end of March of 2025, and if we make their, if, if, with approval, we would then be eligible for funding on or after July first of 2025, for the projects included in this, in this five-year plan. These are low-interest loans, would be a low-interest loan for, for some of these projects, and they would occur over time, so it's not all, the project would, would occur at, at one time, once we receive loan funding approval. It would be based on our, kind of our program schedule in this project plan, over the next five-year period. So some of the projects I've touched base on these, this slide was uploaded to the village website this afternoon, so it's also on the overhead for, for your review as well. The standpipe, most of you may know that we have a standpipe next to Wall Three, just up on Barrington Avenue. That structure is over a hundred and, I think it was nineteen oh six, I wanna say, so it's over a hundred years old. So we're currently studying it, there's an ongoing study to look at, do we wanna rehabilitate it, replace it, or abandon it altogether? This five hundred thousand is merely a placeholder, we, we have no idea at this point what the recommended option will be for, for that structure, but it will need something at some point, sooner than later. The next project is the Illinois sixty-eight water tower painting rehabilitation project. We do have specs on that, and that's close to nine hundred thousand, that includes engineering as well. So that's, that's the next water tower. The water main replacement projects, we're looking at the possibility of, and again, it's kind of plus or minus, depending upon the actual scope of work, but we have three water main replacement projects that we may be considering in recent years, and those particular, so Van Buren, Prairie Lakes, and Dundee Road, they've all had multiple main breaks on certain segments in recent years, over the last five, six, seven, eight years. So we've got, so those projects, we're also looking at as an alternative to replacing water main lining, and so Baxter Woodman will help us explore the pros and cons with these particular main segments for lining. And it's similar to sewer li, sewer lining, it's just lining water mains. Lead service line replacements, this is a little bit more complex, so we are anticipating, currently Baxter Woodman is helping us put together an inventory of all of our lead services in the village. We're anticipating a total, approximate total of around four hundred lead services in the village when the survey is complete. And with a, with an average, an estimated average cost to replace each lead service, house to main is about sixteen thousand. So if we, the village, use loan funds, I E P A low-interest loan funds, for all of these lead service replacements, it would get us to about six-plus million dollars. The key here is, we can't, with loan funding, we can't share the cost of a lead service line replacement. What we've done to this point with a handful of lead services in town, the resident has paid for house to the B box, we've paid B box up to the main. The I E P A won't allow that under their loan program, it has to, the, the loans would have to fund the entire house to ma, house to main replacement project. So we, as staff, are going to bring this topic back to you for continued discussion. As you may recall, last year, we had a conversation with one of the consultants, that Baxter Woodman came in to talk to us a little bit about lead service lines. So we wanna continue the conversation to decide ultimately where we wanna go with this, and how do we incorporate this into the, the project plan.
So not to stop you, but monies have been made available for the municipalities through grant programs that were not associated with I E P A loans, no matter how cheap the money is, which in this instance is very cheap, but it wasn't a loan, it was a grant that replaced them all. I mean, I know Carpenter'sville got millions of dollars to do this, and it's, there's no expectation to repay it, because it's a grant. Are we still able to get any of that, I mean, are we now, or have we missed the opportunity, and we're now forced to go the loan route?
Carpenter, Carpenter'sville's situation is they pursued low-interest loans early on in the process, and they have loan principal forgiveness with some of the loans that they received. So we did not, currently, they don't offer any principal forgiveness, so my last comment on the very bottom there is there may be a possibility of principal forgiveness with future I E P A low-interest loans, but they have not yet made any final determinations. It sounds like they're drafting some language that'll be out in June of this year, and that'll specifically identify who will qualify and maximum amounts.
Well, so then, if the I E P A is not gonna distinguish between the costs associated with the main to the house, where we went from main to the box, and that was on the homeowner from the box to the house, that's gonna cause some work on our side to distinguish those costs, because we can't cover that. We can cover from the main to the box, that's our responsibility. But anything to the home, including going into the home, it's gotta be on the homeowner, so if the I E P A loan can be made available to pick up that cost, I'm okay with it, but the homeowner's gonna have to share.
Unfortunately, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think at the, what's it called, Les, thank you, I M L September, pretty much everything that's available as far as funding for this goes, it's required that the municipality takes care of the main to the house. Now, anything inside the house is the homeowner's responsibility, but unless we are going to pay it out of whatever we do to get the money, we are, if we get any loans or anything like that, they make it the responsibility of the municipality to do the entire thing. Every, every presentation, is that the same thing?
They make it the responsibility so that they know that it gets done, but beyond that, I'm not clear from those presentations, and I didn't ask the question, if, if it's done by, completely by the municipality with these loans, is there, is, is it then between the village and the homeowner where it gets replaced from the B box to the house to recapture some of that? Or in, in some, or subsidize it in the fact that we're managing it? Do you know what I mean? We're, we're, we're contracting and managing, getting it done for them? But it, it feels, it, I, it feels very, like, putting six point four million dollars out for four hundred homes on the other eight hundred homes or residences that are in the village, to have them take on that responsibility does not seem equitable to me.
Thank you. Also, too, trenching, just the actual operation of it is gonna be enormous, because from the box to the house, almost in every instance, you're talking about going under the house or through, how much cement are we gonna have to break up to get that line replaced? Who knows, you know, that could be...
Could be trenching in our direction a bit more.
Well, and it, true enough, but it seems to me that for four hundred lines, six point four million is not gonna cut it, you know, I, I mean, I'm, don't wanna be...
No, that's just an estimate, sure, certainly, some could be substantially higher, some perhaps even lower.
I would think it's gonna be a fair amount higher, but then also, too, all kinds of problems can arise, you know, damage to the home that, you know, wasn't anticipated, or whatever, then where does that leave us, and so, yeah.
One thing I'll add to, trustee Mahoney, your, your thought, and I think I, I know where you're going with that, in, in talking to City Belgian, for example, City Belgian did offer loans to their residents to help pay for house to, to B box, for example. In our case, if we decide to pursue low-interest loans from house to main, we could, and, and through, and use, utilize I E P A loan funds, if we decide to go house to main, the portion that is house to B box, for example, we could work out something where loan funds replace the entire segment, but then the residence portion, we work out something with them, maybe it's a...
We pass that loan on?
A separate loan, but it has to be outside and completely separate.
Is it part of the, the utility billing? You know, does it get added on for those residents?
I believe that's how Elgin structured that.
But that it's, it's measured out, so it's not one big lump sum necessarily for, for people?
So that's kind of like the overview, how I'm familiar, I don't know, I'm not familiar with the details, but those are, these are some of the things we can get into the weeds with, for example, when this comes back to you for, for additional discussion, so... But these projects here, into the millions of dollars, are what we're seeking low-interest loan funding for, and will be summarized and included in detail in the project, whole project.
Are we saying that we're gonna try and get a lump in total of all those amounts right there up front? Or are we going to do individual loans as we take on each project?
Yeah, so the plan will be, will include these projects, so years one and two, for example, might be, if the entire plan is approved, then the, ideally, the funds would become available when we intend to pursue that project. So they wouldn't give us ten million dollars, and 2025 is, okay, here's your, your money for the next five years. It would be, we would be programmed into the schedule, and then we would proceed.
Well, I guess my question is, like, at that point, though, can we say, well, actually, for the standpipe, we're gonna go ahead and pay for that out of our money? Like, can we not take some of that money that we are, we're earmarking for our village, I guess is my question.
It's possible, certainly. If we look at, for example, rehabilitating the standpipe, and it comes in at, I'll just throw out the number, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Exactly, like, can we, can we audible if we, if we start...
I believe that's the case. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent, hundred percent certain on that. I know that these loans are in demand, so I, I suppose there's an opportunity that if we decide to take a pass, even though the project is included in the project plan, if we decide to take a pass and pay for it with our operating funds, our capital funds, I don't see why the I E P A wouldn't support that, but...
And what, what is the leeway that a municipality would have if it were to be a project that took several years to, you know, complete? If the cost of money suddenly goes up, is that one point eight guaranteed, and one point eight, one percent?
The interest rate?
Yeah.
I believe, that's, that's tied to the loan.
All right. And then also, too, would be, would we be limited to the six point four that we, or a certain amount that we can borrow, no matter what costs we, we run into, you know? To your point with the standpipe, if we get into it and we realize, oh, man, we don't wanna rehab this 'cause it's gonna cost ten times more than we thought, it's not worth doing, or if we get halfway into it and run into another snag and realize we need another two million dollars, is it gonna be available? That's my concern.
Well, we've got some ongoing studies concurrent with, if this is approved this evening, we have some ongoing, so we have a water system survey that's currently ongoing, we have the lead service line inventory that's currently ongoing, the standpipe study that's currently ongoing, so all of these studies will be incorporated into this project plan, and then submitted to the I E P A. So it's, it's gonna be a busy summer of studies and projects, just putting this plan together, but I think by the end of 2024, we should really have a solid, concrete idea of what our future looks like.
Okay, so then, two, just not to belabor it, but are we limited to what we've, the, the types of projects that we've communicated so far? I mean, what I'm wondering is, for instance, we have the French drain systems in the terrace, that whole triangle is set up with dissipation-type storm sewers, but there is an opportunity, I talked to Joe Heinz about this, where we can actually line those, they're actually a flexed line that can be sent, and it's almost like a bladder-type of system that now is encased in the entire channel, instead of an aquifer, it would actually direct it away the way it should've been done back in the fifties. Would we be able to add something like that, or any manhole relinings?
This, no, because this is a public water supply loan, so that, that's more of a stormwater issue, so these, this, this loan program would not...
It's water delivery, yes.
Water, water, potable water production and distribution.
Okay.
So do we know for sure that there are no other more, there are no more opportunities for grants for any of these projects?
For these projects, at the present time, no, not, not that I'm aware of.
Can we still apply for a grant, even if we apply for a loan?
What grant?
I believe, I, I'm gonna say yes.
So applying for this loan does not prohibit us from applying for grants, should they become available?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Is, is the main that's on Van Buren and Prairie Lakes Road and Dundee Avenue, are none of those lead pipes on those?
So our mains do not contain lead.
So it's really only on houses pre-nineteen fifty-five, correct?
Uh, pre, it's even later than that, but it is, seventies, at the...
Seventies?
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent of them, but lead was still used in this area, up until the seventies.
Mine's copper, I know that, my place is built in sixty-three, sixty-four, or something like that, so...
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent, there's a fifties house on our street that doesn't have a lead into the house, but, and I would know, but it's, some of the other houses are, it just depends on, practically, it practically depends on what people had on hand with this town.
Yeah. So the work that Trotter did for us some years ago, we spent a whole boatload of money on, on a project that they did, that...
That was our facilities plan, I believe, and a water insurance rate study.
And water, yeah, the rate study.
About ten years' issue ago.
Did they, did that study then contain anything that we can use that would ease Baxter and Woodman's?
We have given them copies of those reports for the, the ongoing studies that they're currently working on. And then we had another consultant, who Dixon Engineering, who worked with us on the twenty-five tower, they have generated reports on the twenty-five, inspection reports on the twenty-five sixty-eight tower and the standpipe, and those have been given to Baxter and Woodman as well, so...
And that nine hundred thousand on the painting for sixty-eight, is that a, that's a recent estimate?
That's a real number.
It had gone up two hundred thousand dollars since we just did the one on twenty-five.
I'm sorry?
It's gone up like two hundred thousand dollars since the last one we did, and it wasn't that long ago.
I believe some of the work, well, it's...
It was closer to seven hundred and eighty thousand.
Uh, well, yeah, because we added fifty grand for the graphics, but...
I added a little bit to this amount, right now, what's in our, our capital plan for next year is eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, so I rounded up, just, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be a little bit of inflationary...
Incidentally.
Yeah, impact going forward.
Well, and each, each tower is different, you know, there was a lot of engineering that was on the inside of each, of, of the twenty-five tower, and I imagine it's not apples to apples.
No, and, and that's a good point, too, because the sixty-eight tower, there's two cell carriers that are Verizon and A T and T, and there's a whole process where they have to co-locate during, prior to the project beginning, and, and continue their providing service in the immediate vicinity, and then they'll reinstall once our project is done, so there's some...
Some of that's owned by Barrington, isn't it? I think one of the, one of the antennas, they...
Owned by, well, they're Verizon and A T and T are the, are the carriers.
Well, okay, but I thought, I thought there was a police department line, antenna on there that we, we made an arrangement with Barrington, and we said, yeah, you wanna put it up there, that's fine, but you gotta get it up there.
I don't know if that's still, I've not heard of that since I've been here, so I, I can look into that and find out if that's...
Cause that's gonna, they gotta go up there and take it down, and then move it, and then put it back up there, that's gonna be a pretty significant expense for them, unfortunately, so... So the standpipe, you know, I mean, there's a big gap between renovation and killing it. What, what's the benefit that we're getting out of it if we, if we keep it? Because if we are actually considering the possibility of, of taking it offline and essentially killing it, are we getting any benefit from it now?
We are getting benefit, because we have two pressure zones within our water distribution system, and that's something that Baxter Woodman is taking a look at, they're looking at some modeling numbers that we've had done with a prior consultant a number of years ago, and looking at... It, it's probably unlikely we can abandon and take the system out altogether, but we're, something we're looking into, and, and should have some information on that later this year.
So, and one last question, if this is mainly focused on delivery of potable water, that's okay. Do we have any ongoing expenses with the wells, the two, that we had, the deep well that was offline for the longest time, and is... had, the deep well that was offline for the longest time, and is there anything we can, are there any expenses that we have coming on that that could be added to this?
As of right now, we're looking to, it was off for many years, and so it was put back into service, I want to say three-ish years ago.
Yeah, something like that.
We're looking to have it assessed. We, we perform well maintenance on all four of our wells on an annual basis, but that one, it may be a little more, we may have budgeted for more of a comprehensive evaluation of that well, just to see how it's doing after three-plus years. So, but as far as any capital improvements to it, no, not yet. We'll find out once we take a look, take a closer look at that well. So it's possible, and then so that, for example, other, last bullet point, there are other possible water-related projects, that's one that could plug in, but we just don't know at this point. Not anticipating any capital expenditures for, for the deep well. But the Shallower well at the Wisp, excuse me, the water treatment plant was essentially rebuilt a number of years ago, two, three years ago, and that was a fairly expensive endeavor.
And the study, in, just in general, is a requirement of being able to apply for the loans, correct?
This, yes. Yep, absolutely. And then following this, submission of this plan and approval, then we submit the application.
Okay. Cool. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Phil, I appreciate it. When we're going to start this? April?
Well, no, they, Baxter Woodman would start developing the plan immediately.
Oh, all right.
So the idea is to submit late summer, early fall.
Okay. All right. And we just let a gentleman join us?
We have the motion.
Well, I just wondered, are you from Baxter Woodman?
No.
No, okay, sorry. Okay. Okay, no other questions? Kathleen?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
And Trustee Soder?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that takes us then to Phil's reports. Let's start with Andy.
Report that the Arts Council installed a bunch of artwork today, so we're getting ready for the show on Saturday, and we had over 85 artwork, artwork submitted that are in the show, so be sure to show up 6 to 9 Saturday, black and gray.
Those pieces will be for sale, correct?
Yeah, it's up to each artist, and we don't take any commission. It would just, whatever they sell it for, they get full price. Some are not for sale, some are for sale, but yeah, it's going to be a pretty cool event. I was there when we were taking in artwork on Sunday night, and a lot of people were very excited about being able to share their artwork with communities, so pretty excited about that.
Cool.
And I note that the trail is nice and open now, so people are starting to come through. There's no ice patches, at least from here to St. Charles or Crystal Lake. Did some bike riding, and a lot of people are out now, so downtown should get a little busier. That is all.
Trish?
We are going to put out the golden rocks again, or they should be hidden tonight, and then you can redeem them for a Jimmy Bar at Dairy Queen, so we will be advertising that. So that's some of our fun, St. Patrick's Day parade fun.
The buildup to-
I know.
Guys, guys.
Yeah. So we're putting like 32 rocks out. We actually have 90 and only 30-something back, so people I think are holding on to them for souvenirs or redeem for Jimmy Bar this year, I'm not sure, but we have to make some more, but yeah, so that's starting now.
Any minor accident?
Yeah. It'll be on social media tomorrow afternoon on the Tom McDevee Bridge.
Scott? I have no report. Eric?
No report.
No report. Kathleen?
Just now that we've passed the item F on the committees and that kind of thing, I'm hoping that the depot, the General Village, or the General Village slash Events Committee can take a look at those and can pass information back and forth on, you know, who we would recommend for Jeff to appoint, and, so that we can get something going in that depot council up and going pretty quickly, because there's planning and things like that, and establishing just the whole group. That will take a little bit of time so that we can get that done prior to the opening of market, and have a vision of what, you know, and steps for where we can-
The first market, is that in April or May?
It's May 11th.
May 11.
May 11, Smothers' Day's weekend, but there's also staffing and that kind of thing for St. Patrick's Day and other things that are happening there, so that's it.
Sarah?
I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, so this may have been addressed. Planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning, I've talked to two individuals on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I've got, yet to contact Cam on a couple of things, but no real issues as far as, but I do have one individual who has expressed a, I think, a desire to move on.
Okay. I, we do have-
So there might be a-
One or two people who only attended three meetings last year, and that's a problem.
Well, that was what I, in fact, asked both the individuals on the board that I spoke to, and neither one of them pointed to any issues with attendance, so.
Okay, that's, so I brought, I think I brought this up back in December. We do have, if you look through all of the meeting minutes, if you look through everything for the meetings, we have one or two people who literally out of, we had five canceled meetings. We had five canceled meetings. I know of at least three that were for lack of quorum. And then we have one or at least, at least one, maybe two people who only attended a total of three meetings last year. And with our new ordinance on the books, that is a huge problem. So I'm at the point where I either want to look at reducing the number of commissioners, which is not what I want to do, but we have to have people willing to make this a responsibility.
And that's a challenge.
But, or we need to take down the number of commissioners, or we need to have the commissioners come before us and restate. We do have that in our ordinance now, that for attendance issues, they need to come before us, they need to explain themselves, and it needs to be figured out. Are they committed to this or not?
Yeah, and-
Because we can't keep doing this.
No, I get it, but still, we've got a, we've got a chairman of the commission whose responsibility is to communicate that to us and to me specifically, and I'd get to hear anything that way, so I'm, I'm going to reach out, and if we do have a problem and it can be pointed to, as I said, I've talked to a number of the current members, and none of whom have pointed to the issues that you have, so I want to find out about that.
Okay. I mean, it was brought up last fall. We actually have a report that our commissioner ran with all of the numbers for all of the attendance, for all of the commissioners, and including some very fancy formulas about exactly how many meetings any one individual can miss before we will fail quorum. So we have all that, we received it last summer.
Yeah, received a copy.
Yeah, all right. Well, then we'll, we'll take a look at it. As I say, I've been, I've been approached about moving one individual who wants to move off, and if there's-
There's more than that.
I believe there's other people that are also in the application system that have expressed interest.
Okay. What I don't, what I, the one thing I am concerned about is making this an onerous process, and I don't want to call anybody before the mask to explain themselves, because all that's going to do is discourage people from getting involved, and that's the last thing we need, because even without that in place, I still have a big enough challenge trying to find people who will show up, who will take it seriously, do the homework, and, and do-
Well, we don't have that now, so.
Well, true enough, and that's been my challenge.
We actually, as a board, had to put an ordinance into place last year that allows us to call people before us.
Yeah.
Because we have so many attendance issues.
Right.
And I'm going to be enforcing that if we cannot get this together. We have failed our local businesses. We have failed to attend meetings. We had two meetings last year that people showed up here, and we did not have enough seats to fill, because a person did not call to even say that they wouldn't be here.
Right.
It is a problem whether you think it is or not.
I'm not suggesting that it isn't a problem. I know that, and I, I recognize it, and it's a concern. What I, I don't think the woods are burning, though, and so there's, you know, if we want to talk about a little bit of a-
They're smoking.
A distinguishing, okay. Well, again, as I say, I'm going to, I'm going to contact at least one individual that I know on the board, and I've talked to two others, and so-
And none of whom were the commissioner?
You mean the chairman?
Chairman, none of whom were the chairman. Okay.
So, and, and as I say, we'll, we'll see about, you know, making a couple of changes, because I think there will be room for some, so.
I'll look forward to hearing about that in a couple of weeks.
Cool, and we'll get that going. Kelly?
Oh, I'm sorry, you done, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
No report.
No report. Chief?
No report.
Phil?
No report.
Brandis?
No report.
All right. Okay, that's staff reports. Do we have executive session? I don't think we do. All righty, so then I will entertain a-
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Would you like to have executive session?
Yes, I would like to have executive session.
All right.
So I would like to close the public meeting to executive session, which has closed the public and media under provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act 5 I L C S 120-2, C1 Personnel and Legal Counsel.
Okay.
And then adjourn out of the-
And then adjourn out of executive session and not return to open.
Second. Kathleen?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
And President Lang.
Yes. Okay. I thank you all for coming. I'll see you in two weeks. You don't have to leave, but can't stay here.
Can we go?
You got five minutes?
Why would say that?
Oh, it's up to you.
Is it, is it going to be long?
I don't, I don't think so.
Legal?
Let's just do it.